Okay, I'd like to call the Planning Board meeting of the Village of Lansing to order for Tuesday, April 26, 2022 at 7:04 PM. Would everybody remember to silence their phones this time since we are here in person? Haven't already. So the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We do not have minutes from April 11, so we'll do those next time. But we do have minutes from March the 29th. Has everybody had a chance to look those over? And are there any additional changes in what? Let's see. Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes to make them official.
I move to approve the minutes.
Monica?
A second.
Pat? All those in favor? Aye.
I abstain.
Okay.
Yep. Jim wasn't there.
Next item is the public comment period. This is for anyone who has something they'd like to bring to the Planning Board that is not on the agenda this evening. Is there anybody either here with us live or on Zoom that would like to do something to the attention of the Planning Board?
Can you hear me? This is Pat O'Rourke.
Hi, Pat.
Hi, I just wanted to let you know I'm here as the liaison for the trustee board.
Okay. Is there anyone else? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
I move to close the public comment period.
Okay, Mike B.
A second.
Monica, second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, Jim can go for that too. Public hearing for subdivision 2022, 45, 63. Gary Oremsky is proposing a subdivision of an existing parcel located at 2570 North Trip Hammer Road, tax parcel 42.1-1-54, which contains 1.92 acres or 82,764 square feet and is located in the medium-density residential district. So who's here with us this evening to?
I was going to say that.
I know it's, but I'm thinking.
Different Gary.
Hi.
And also Janice Hornby is here with us as well.
Gary would love to be here tonight, but he's ill, so.
Oh, great. Well, wish him.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm glad, thank you.
Jan came to me, this is a little while back.
I think we signed in October.
Yeah, expressing the interest of subdividing your parcel. And as we looked at it, it had to be some approval of some type of variance because it was impossible to get lots to meet code as far as lots. Frontage was fine, everything else was fine. The idea to come up with was to, Jan, in front of the BCA, an informal type hearing, to find out what they had thought of the whole situation and what they would require.
Okay.
I think the best, correct me wrong if I'm wrong, Jan, I think the advice the BCA gave you was to hire someone to find out, which is Gary, to find out whether both parcels could exist, being smaller and still have enough room to have a septic system as per the county. And Gary has gone through and done that, that's the.
Oh, okay.
That's what you have there. It reveals that it is possible to have both parcels being smaller than what the code requires but still have a septic system on each one.
You have town water? Okay, so that proximity to.
Makes it a lot easier, for sure.
As I was saying, okay. Yes, I tried to do a drive-by and I said if I had been driving behind me, I would have said awful things because I, obviously, I didn't want to pull into your driveway. There's no place else to pull over, so I couldn't really get a read on this.
You have a nice big driveway, so you can actually pull it.
Well, I didn't want to do that, but it's just like, glad that you're here to help us to work this out. Okay, so Gary, what do you want to tell us?
So we looked at a couple of options, you know, keeping one lot as a fully conforming lot and then the other one just smaller. But it ended up, the smaller lot ended up being, only being half of the required size. And we just felt like that was too small. I think technically it could work, but I feel like having two nearly identically sized lots makes more sense for that area. And also, if we did that, then the second one would need two area variances, one for minimum road frontage because it wouldn't have the 150 feet of road frontage and also the lot size, overall lot size. So we elected to keep the lots as two nearly identically sized lots, one the 153 feet wide, one's 150 feet wide, both of them 300 feet deep. And if you look at the original survey, which I also passed around, I don't know if, I might give you a copy of the. This originally had two more lots to the south that were both 150 feet wide.
Oh, okay.
I don't know when in the past those two got combined, but that's where the, there's a building there now that way back one, Thomas Associates, back in the, like in the eighties. I don't know if it ever did get subdivided into lots C and D as shown on this original survey, but.
I think, but did you? I was having trouble sort of getting my theories on that. It's sort of hard to read some of that stuff on the.
Yeah, those older surveys, I don't know what you're looking at.
It shows the surrounding lots and how it was originally broken up.
Okay, so this is the way, this is where you're proposing.
Yeah, so if you look at sheet C2.
Oh, and there's the lead.
Yep. We also do septic design, so, you know, we did our, you know, kind of a worst-case scenario. We didn't go out and do perk tests or anything like that, but we kind of took the worst-case scenario of if we, you know, had to do a sand filter, which takes up the most amount of space on a lot with it. And there's plenty of room there.
Okay.
So. And, you know, existing parking, you know, once the lots get split, there's already parking there.
So the drive, is it, where the drive will be a new drive or will it be shared drive?
Well, you can see it's a circular drive here. And we're splitting, you know, half of the circle where the bottom, the southern end of it would go with the existing house.
Okay.
And then the top part would, you know, the northern part of it would go with the.
Is it going to actually be physically separated somehow or will you be able to pass through itself?
I don't think, I mean, we could, but I didn't intend to do that.
Well, I'm just.
There's two actual entryways.
Right, yeah, I'm just curious. Mike, so if this is subdivided and whoever owns the property, is there any concern with, you know, having the sort of connected driveway being shared between two owners in the future or is that?
That's something that the two parcels would have in the title.
Yeah, that's a shared driveway agreement.
What about that existing structure on the northern piece? If there's that existing structure that says. If they built another structure there, is there anything like, I know that we've talked about accessory buildings a lot, is there anything to be concerned about with that?
If you build another, if it's existing, you know.
Well, no, but if they build another one there.
Another one, they have to be all of the setback.
Okay.
If it's for an accessory building, then the median density, for instance.
Even if they build, like if they build a house on the lot, then they're going to have to do something about this.
They won't have to do anything about it, but if they want another one in addition.
Get another accessory building or a house?
Not an accessory.
Either one, if this one, what's existing stays. It doesn't have to, if it's not conforming, it's still not conforming.
Another shed.
If it's, if you build anything new, like a primary building or an accessory building, would have to meet all of the requirements.
The new building, but the original building doesn't stay.
Original building to stay.
Is it in good condition? Is it in good?
That existing barn shed, I mean, it's old, but.
Or is this one of those situations where sort of, you know, replace it or something, you still could keep it.
It's existing, so they can't.
Yeah.
Doesn't need to come down.
Repair it and whatever. Any other questions? And so are you planning, you're planning to sell this parcel, I would assume, or are you planning?
We're planning to sell the original.
Oh, the original.
Yeah. Because it's just, it's too much right now. This is personal stuff, but it's just too much for my husband to take care of at this point. It's a beautiful old house.
It is.
And we love it, but it's more than he can handle at this point. So it's easiest for us to sell that. Once that's off his plate, he'll be able to enjoy life a little more without doing that.
Which means you can too.
Yes, me too. And newer buildings usually have a lot less upkeep.
I know. The charm is lost, but it has a different kind of charm.
Yes. Had it for a long time.
Yes, it is a pretty house.
And, you know, building a building that's single-story, you know, it's aging in place, you know, kind of more accessible.
So you are planning to move next door?
Yes.
Okay. So you can keep an eye on it. Um, I don't have any other questions.
At this point, you probably should take a motion technically that this is a minor subdivision.
Oh, yes, okay, yes.
I move that this is a minor subdivision.
For a second. Pat, all those in favor? A minor subdivision being one additional.
Being two.
Yeah, the original plus one. Do we, to send into the BCA or anything that we didn't find anything? Usually we don't unless it's kind of, it seems fairly straightforward.
We have a meeting next week, next Tuesday.
BCA meeting.
It kind of worked out really well for Jan and for Michelle, who will be coming up here in a second. Worked really well. Come in to visit, get any information, get any suggestions from the Planning Board. And then you'll be at the BCA next week.
Except the third.
For those variances, and if accepted, you'll become invited to the Planning Board with the variance in hand.
Okay, for our meeting. So is that May 3rd?
Yes.
May 3rd is the BCA.
Okay. All right. Okay, so.
That's it?
Yes, do you have something?
Maybe out of order here, but I'm assuming either our Oremsky's neighbors need to enter to the north. And I was mostly here because I'm curious about what they were planning, not. But this is yesterday's mail and couldn't see here between 9:00 and 1:00 to look at any plans. So I don't know if this is the time for me to ask questions or.
Yes.
I'm mostly, as I just said to Jan, my only real concern would be that the building is blocking my view to the southwest. Are you folks are not?
No, not, no. But I share your concern in that you probably have a pretty nice view as you're up. And, yeah, more than just that Winter Lake view thing. So I don't know whether that's something that you will be taking into consideration. Sure, you want.
There's a limitation, pardon me.
For height, I think.
Yeah, there's a limitation. And I offered for her to come over because she could, if she had an objection, couldn't she stop it at the next meeting?
I propose possible new obstruction. I feel like that's more of a private cause of action. I don't think we really have, you know, some very. I don't. On the shore kind of things, you know, they have these, the ordinances that protect the view shed. We don't as such.
Right, and I mean, what we're here to decide on is whether or not to allow the subdivision.
Right.
So, you know, she could subdivide and then never build anything on it, you know, that, or she could build on it. So, you know, our purview is, do we approve the subdivision or not? If she decides to build on it, then there's other things in, you know, in village law that, you know, she has to follow.
Okay, and that would also be the time to question what setbacks are.
Right, all of that. And we'll be watching that carefully as well. But now that you know that she has this concern, I think, you know, it's good that you came and expressed that. Because otherwise, you know, sometimes these things just get lost in the shuffle.
Yeah, not that easily.
Yes.
So view shed, is that the term?
Well, that's what I say. I always say view shed, I don't know.
Some reason at the meeting in October, I thought that was mentioned as something that was a reality here and I wasn't aware of it. I've looked at all the, that I can on the village website, and I haven't seen anything like that, so.
I don't know if it's in, we should do a search on that.
I don't think there's anything in the village law.
No, not view shed, but I think it was in the unique.
Unique natural areas?
Maybe.
Yeah, that's.
Along.
There might be, there's something special on there for the.
I think actually, yeah, no, I don't think there is, but.
The unique natural, that's what the upper left-hand map is. That's the Chris map that shows unique natural areas, if there are any.
Yeah.
Didn't show up on there.
Okay. Yeah, that's. I, well, now that you've said that, if I, I feel like there's something, but I may be confusing it because. Yeah, it is. Do you have, do you have any other questions for us?
No, no, that was, that was it primarily.
Okay, well, I'm glad that you.
Brent has a comment.
Oh, Brent. Oh, gosh, I keep forgetting you guys. Brent, go ahead.
Yeah, good evening. I have two topic areas. One, I think, is my normal topic area and the other is a little outside of it. But I was just reviewing the the stormwater management requirements for a basic SWIP. And I guess a question, there's a couple of thresholds that are in the ordinance that may or may not be triggered. And I guess I would maybe pose this as a question to Gary and let him respond either now or for the next meeting. I think there's a trigger threshold of any project that has an area of disturbance of 5,000 square feet or a cubic volume of 250, or a volume of 250 cubic feet. So I think that the 250 sounds like it probably would be likely to be impacted. So it's a question, not a statement. Do we need to require a request? Either that there is a stormwater management, basic stormwater management plan as a matter or as a condition, I'm sorry, required for the subdivision? Or could it be, if there is one required, could it be a condition that would say something to the effect that upon the submittal of a building permit for the new home, that that's when the basic SWIP would be addressed? But again, I'm posing this as a question, not a statement. So maybe that's something Gary could look into for the next meeting.
Right. I was just thinking, Brett, that if something were to be built on there, that I would use a standard notice of ground disturbance to figure out, you know, how much land would be disturbed at that point? And then if it reaches any of the thresholds, we'd go with a basic SWIP. I think you and I have worked on that before on a few projects.
Sure. Sure.
Does that sound reasonable?
I think so. It might be worth just having some kind of comment in the, you know, assuming there's going to be an approval at some point, just reference that future construction would be subject to, you know, an area of disturbance or the disturbance application. That way, I guess it's probably irrelevant in this case because the subdivider is likely to be the builder. But, you know, anyway, I think that, you know, I wanted to bring that up and it sounds like there's some way to address that either, you know, as a note or as a condition. And then the other topic, which I may be kind of behind the curve on, knowing where you're at, but my question is, when there's any action, regulatory action that involves, or when there's a project or an application that requires regulatory decisions by two agencies within one municipality, doesn't one of them need to.
Take the lead.
The, on behalf of the other? And so does the Planning Board need to declare lead agency for seeker and perform it on behalf of the ZBA or vice versa?
Is that a threshold because of two agencies having input on a certain project? Or is it because of the two agencies? Or is it because of a minor subdivision?
I don't know the answer. I'm only, you know, kind of just curious if that needs to be addressed.
I think in the past, the only time we've had that was when it was the trustees involved with us. But I don't ever, well, we haven't had that many BCA's, but who takes the lead? But I guess we would take the lead, probably.
It also would be a matter of whether an EAF is required, a minor subdivision. It wouldn't be a major subdivision, but I'm almost sure that it's exempted in mine.
Yeah, I don't think for the other minor subdivisions we've done in the past few years of the.
Seeker, but I will double check. I'll double check that, Brett, but I think it's exempted of minor subdivision.
I think what we've done is just do the short one, just on kind of general principle, just to be sure that, you know, we've covered everything.
That's a good point, Brett. But you're right. Yeah, I just think that if. We should declare ourselves lead agency to do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think what their, the idea is they just want to try to avoid having two agencies, even if they're simple, short EAFs, to do two decisions that somehow.
Right.
Unlikely, but could somehow conflict with each other.
You will, I'll look into that, Brett. It's a good point. And then if something happens that where we have to have a short EAF, it's really not an issue.
Not an issue at all.
But it's a good point. I'll look it up, Brett.
Okay, yep.
Also, I'd like to just address the form order. But I don't think my camera's on or if you want it on, but.
Do you want us to?
Doesn't matter. Just for people at home, I want to make sure they can.
There you go.
For real. Regarding the stormwater, Brett, generally, if the ground disturbance is less than an acre, then a SWIP is not required.
And that's for. And with a. That's for a stormwater ordinance that's modeled on the New York State DEC regulations. In the Village of Lansing, there's three levels of stormwater management. And one's a full, one is for a full SWIP, which is based on an acre. Then there's one that's a simple SWIP, which is for a lesser impact. And then there's a basic SWIP. And so there's different lower levels of thresholds in the village.
And that would only come in with a, I believe, with a two-lot subdivision, that only comes into effect once one of the lots is, you know, if there's any ground disturbance on one of the lots. If it was more than two lots, I believe you would have to provide a SWIP ahead of time in order to get the subdivision approved because you need to make sure there's enough room for the, any stormwater ponds that might be required and any other surface water conveyance, nothing, and things like that. But for two, you know, two-lot subdivisions, it's generally not required that I'm aware of.
Yeah, in the, I just, I was just reading the village ordinance and it doesn't mention major or minor. It just simply says a project that just has an area of disturbance of than 5,000 square feet or a volume of more than 250 cubic feet.
Okay. But again, for this, for this, it's just a subdivision. We're not disturbing any dirt at this point. We're just drawing a lot.
Right, and so I think that it can be handled as some kind of a note or condition.
Oh, like, as you said, when the building permit is, you, like, it noted in there that when the building permit is pulled, that this would be part of, it would trigger.
That's normal, that's standard procedure anyway for any building.
I would require a notice of ground disturbance anyway.
Right, okay, good. Elkes under, okay. Anything else from the folks who are not with us? Where on this, are you, you're on the Lansing side? Or are you, so you're in that next parcel going on Trip Hammer?
Yeah, toward the top of the page there.
Hidden by as much vegetation as possible.
And you're worried about the view?
Okay, great. I just wanted to be sure, and again, thank you for coming. It's really important that people let us know so that we can make a better decision.
How's your work?
Okay, anything else?
Carl, so?
Good, so you will be headed to the BCA next week and then we will, like, we will see you, I assume, then on May 9. We'll put you on the agenda.
And I'll be in touch with both of you.
Is it May 9? Is that one of those?
Am I wrong about that, May 9? No, no, I think it's May 9th, it's the second Monday.
Okay. Yeah, I may be. I may be out of town now. Yeah, May 9th is the.
I thought it was May 9th, I was gonna say.
We might be going for vacation for that week, so I may not be here for May 9th.
Well, you'd be able.
Zoom in on vacation.
Yeah, I was.
I'm just checking on you really. I think you'll be, I think you'll be fine.
Well, you were.
I mean, I think if we get through. Get the BCA approval, then this meeting.
That's right. I was going to say, I don't think it should be a big deal. And just let Mike know what we should expect, whether you want to attend via Zoom too. That would be also another option.
I'm right down the road, so.
Well, I know, but you never know.
Yeah, if things change, hopefully.
Yes. Terrific, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the next item. Division 2022, 45, 64. Benedict Jones. An existing parcel located at 1016 Icuga Heights Road, tax parcel 43.1-1-26.5, which contains 2.289 acres or 99,708 square feet and is located in the low-density residential district. I somehow think we're still. So Michelle, I think you're with us Zoom, correct?
Hi, nice to be with you.
Can you tell us?
Michelle came to me with this parcel. This is slightly different. It's same as in you'll have to motion, you'll motion whether it's a minor subdivision or not. But it's broken into parcel A and parcel B. You have a subdivision map that I supplied to you. Parcel A would be conforming parcel. Everything was to be all set, frontage, acreage. Parcel B then would need the variance. It is short as far as area, total area. It does have enough frontage because on a corner lot, you take in consideration both as frontage. That would be Icuga Heights and Icuga Hills. So this too would require an area variance.
Okay.
Like that shed that's shown that we're talking about a little bit, that is.
A pump station.
That's a village or municipal.
Yeah, it's for, it's for water and the village owns it.
And Michelle, is there, because when you look at Google Maps, there's another structure on that property that I'm assuming lands with inside parcel B?
It is, I'm sorry, parcel B, it's a temporary, it's sort of on cement blocks at the corner, so it's not a permanent structure. But yes, that's in parcel B.
Is there anything there, Mike, to worry about with that?
Well, could I just add, so you're saying it's a temporary structure, Michelle? Because I live just down the road and I walk by and I know it seems to look like it has a metal roof and everything.
Well, I guess I'm saying it's temporary in terms of there's no foundation or there's no, it's not any, it's not a great quality building. It was sort of put up for. Yeah.
So it's a movable structure.
It's a movable structure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Each corner has, you know, cement blocks to hold it up.
Okay.
Would there be some kind of concern on this as far as you get, you're starting to get into sloped land in this area? Is there a question as far as if you have more impervious surface on parcel B that would cause an issue with too much water running down Icuga Hills or too much water running down the neighbor's land? Or is this something that needs to be handled, like the last situation needs to be handled as per if something got built there? Brett, did you hear me?
I don't know, Brent, I don't know if he did.
Yes, I was listening. I'm.
Is there a concern, stormwater concern there or anything that you could say?
I think it's a question that needs to be given attention and I'm not. I think it's a question that needs to be given attention and I'm not sure that there's a concern, but, uh, it kind of maybe is, again, one of those things that maybe we need to, to put in a condition or a note, because when the time comes, and I think you're alluding to is when the house or when the structure is built, we can't, we don't know what it is at this minute in time. So there's a chance that it would need to be, uh, trigger some kind of a, you know, we, I just was describing how there's three different levels of stormwater management and that, in the, in the smallest of, in the minimal of, of forms, I believe the terminology is, is basic. So therefore it, it allows us to take a look at these situations and evaluate them on a case-by-case basis without just, um, saying that if there's a trigger, you know, if there's a threshold that's triggered, then you have to meet certain compliance. I think that the basic allows us to, uh, evaluate the project on a key, on its merits. And so I think, Mike, your point is, is that we ought to, uh, take that into consideration that if we, uh, when the time comes to approve this, that maybe there is a condition that would be more specific, um, to just identifying that, because we just don't know where the, the drainage would run in the future. So I think it's a valid question and, and really kind of, I'm not sure that it's different than my point on the other one is, we just don't know, you know, how much runoff there's going to be from either of the two new constructions and that we will need to address that, uh, when the time comes.
Could I just add that my plan, I don't plan on building. Uh, I mean, maybe eventually, but as of right now, um, I, I've moved downtown and I would just like to keep a little piece of, of that property, um, for my own use. So I'm not anticipating coming for building permit in any time. I'm really just looking to subdivide it.
Because it's a corner lot, could it have an address that's Cugah Hills Road as opposed to Cugah Heights Road? Does that matter or how does that work?
Pretty language too, right? Because there's that shed.
Oh, it doesn't quite go all the way over to Cugah Hills. Nope. They kept the easement there or something. Okay. Yeah. Well, I, yeah, there is a, a rather grate that was for, for water to, at the beginning of the driveway, as I recall. I don't know. I, I knew the people that lived there before and I don't think there were, was issue with water going down.
No. I mean, I, I lived there for 10 years. On, you mean on 1016 Cugah Heights Road?
Yeah.
Really good drainage that they, that they, the previous owners adopted to put in.
Right. Okay. So I guess we have a similar situation where we all really, does anybody have any other questions? Pat, Monica?
What's the sewer situation here?
Uh, this is septic where these, Cugah Heights is all septic. I mean theoretically, they've been talking about putting a sewer line down there, but, um, I think given some of the budget constraints and we will, I, I don't think anybody's counting on it happening, uh, real soon. Let's put it that way.
To be honest, Michelle, I think that when you go to the B C A, I can't speak for the B C A, but they would probably ask you to verify that it is possible, just like Jan Orswee did, that it is possible to have a septic system on that property.
Yeah, it would be, yeah, it would be wise to have somebody like Gary help you with that maybe.
Yeah. And, and I would give you a call. I can give you a call tomorrow and set things up for what to expect from the B C A. Maybe you can get a jump on some items.
Thank you.
Okay, um, well, as this is the same situation as a regional parcel plus one, um, I believe that this is a minor subdivision. I would like to take a vote on that. Could I have a motion?
I move that it's a minor subdivision.
One second.
Okay, Mike to Monica. All those in favor? I. Okay. So again, yes.
And to somewhat answer your question, whether that would be a Cugah Hills or a Cugah Heights. We have to be Cugah Heights because the property behind it is one Cugah Hills.
Okay. They did that name. My parents had it just with half on it. My mother.
Have a building in the city with 10 and a half.
I was just saying, I lived at 167 and a half Upper Greer Road, so.
No, my parents for a while until they got neighbors, they were in a half and my mother was.
Michelle, I'll make contact with you tomorrow. I'll send you an email and we'll make sure that, uh, we've got all our ducks in the hole, so to speak, for the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you all.
Okay, other business. Uh, we still have our tree ordinance and Natalie sent us a red line and unfortunately both Mike and I did not see the red.
Mike Baker saw the red.
And so we have been left out.
But I will scan it in PDF, so.
For what it's worth, I didn't see red either.
Did you, Pat?
I didn't until I went into markup mode.
Mark it?
Maybe you have.
Mark for markup. Oh, I, I did it. Well, wait a minute. You'd be like in. Oh, my goodness.
To show all markup. Oh, because I had to do it with no markup because it was too marked up for me to follow it.
Can we help you, sir?
Here to vote.
Oh, it's actually in the next building. Sorry, they.
Building?
The next building. They changed it because of our meeting here this evening. Thank you for coming to vote though. Here we are with.
We can get his name and put it on them.
A cameo appearance by, I, I have to admit, I did not open it up because when did we get it? Like 3 o'clock?
Yeah, sorry. It took me a while.
We see children. So basically, I think tree ordinance, I think the whole parking lot thing is, um, had a conversation with Simon, actually. And, um, no, I think the fact that we are, have the tree bank set up, we have to really just try this and see how it works, I think. I really would though, like, bundle this with talking about some of the changes we'd like to see. I really think I would love to work with Brent and John Courtney and some other people and find out what would be a sort of reasonable parking lot design that would incorporate trees, incorporate safety issues and still be reasonably easy to snow plow. I know it's, but you know what? I don't want that to stop us from having trees in our parking lots. And they, they capture water. I think the islands helped this stormwater situation. I know there, you know, I see reasonable parking lots at places like Home Depot and some of that. I don't see why we can't start working toward that with our parking lots. So I think, you know, in terms of the tree ordinance, I'm upset that we didn't see the red line. Darn. Because I would have liked to wrap that up.
It was mostly reorganizing.
Okay.
I didn't take out anything. I just reorganized.
Shuffled it around? Did you shuffle, like, put them under different places that we?
Yes.
Okay.
I kind of just made it to, to me that, to make it easier to read.
Okay.
And then I did have some questions as to the buffer strips.
Which is in our code, so.
It's in the code. We omit the buffer strip from counting towards area. So then are any trees in the buffer strip not counted towards density?
Found that confusing.
Yeah.
I did too, but I kept thinking, well, maybe it's just me because I sometimes do. So what? Read, read how it goes.
So currently it says, um, under minimum tree density requirements, density may be achieved by counting existing trees to be conserve, conserved and by adding new trees in accordance with the standards set forth in this local law. The density calculation shall be based on the total site area minus the area of any D E C designated wetlands, utility easements, drainage easements, public right of ways and buffer strips required by village code 145-24. Buffer strips required by village code will still need to be met, will still need to meet the landscaping of that code. The question I have is do trees in the buffer strip then count?
I thought they did.
You're not counting at this point.
But you're not counting it as the area. Yeah.
Or you're not counting it, are you not counting what is in the buffer strip as how many trees or whatnot you have? Or you're not, you're taking out the area that has the buffer strip?
And therefore.
The area that has the buffer strip and also not counting.
So you couldn't count the trees if you take that area out.
I agree. But if you're making people put in trees to the buffer area and then also putting in trees for the tree log.
Well, that, well, I guess it's so our, is the buff, is our current buffer code and this in conflict? Is that what we're saying?
Well, no, if you're, if you're completely taking the buffer strip out, then you're having them do two different landscaping requirements.
Yeah, I will, I will say that when I was looking through the code and I thought, oh, yes. I think first of all that we have been forgetting about, well, I have been forgetting about the buffer strip. But yeah, I think too, this requires another consideration about how these two work together.
If you count them, then the requirements of the buffer strip are slightly different than the requirements of this. And then they are in conflict.
Yes, I know.
Well, we, I, I don't, I don't agree with you. Lisa said that we've been forgetting about.
No, I said, I think I, because, no, we haven't had many situations where we.
Last one was Nissan. And, and not very often do we find a high density, or I'm sorry.
Residential versus commercial high traffic.
It's not very often.
No, it's non-residential, not necessarily commercial high traffic.
No, but.
Non-residential?
Use is what, what I looked at today.
But we still haven't had those situations where we've had projects.
No, but we could, I suppose. Um, yeah, in fact, it's because of Nissan that we started getting into the whole tree.
Kick this whole thing off.
I was gonna say, so. Forget about it per se, but you know, the only other situation we had similar is the P D A. And that's the one that I felt I wished I had been a little more, um, aggressive about that one. But it was already too late, frankly, because that is a residential meeting commercial, um, but not, yeah, commercial high traffic.
Okay. So if you have another Nissan, let's say we hit a Nissan project after we've had the tree ordinance.
Right.
Okay, use that for example. So if we're requiring Nissan to have that buffer with the residential area on Uptown Road, is that what you're putting in that buffer, does that count towards the tree ordinance?
That's the question.
I would think that if our goal is to make sure that there is tree density on a piece of property, then we should count the tree density on that piece of property. Whether it's a buffer or in a nice little area that we designated in the middle of the parking lot or if the point is to reach a tree density on a parcel, you should count all of the tree density on that parcel.
All the trees should count.
Now, I use logic and that doesn't go well for me most of the times.
So I have, I have the opposite idea where I would like trees like on the parcel, not right here. You know what I mean?
Right.
If you take that buffer out, because they could just cram all the trees in the buffer and get a two for one, right? And then I have nothing actually in the parcel, right, for shading or just aesthetically. So you can have this like wide open vacant piece of asphalt and then a bunch of trees on the edge, right? And still.
Still need your parking tree, parking lot trees.
Right.
If it can get there.
Right now, we don't have that, right? So I would like, so my goal with this is to get as many trees as we can. I think the buffer strip should be separate because the buffer strip does something completely different. The buffer strip is. And in fact, your tree ordinance is.
Take it out of the entire plot because that's a required thing we have.
I think keeping it completely separated is cleaner too. So like buffer strip has its own set of rules. And then the parcel itself has this tree ordinance.
Is that what this says? That's what this says.
Oh, Brett had something.
Oh, Brent, gosh, I keep forgetting to look up. Brent.
I just was, you had suggested you wanted to, uh, you know, get input on design. And I think that's a good valid point in that, you know, we kind of have, we've had, uh, Cugah Medical in front of us and, uh, seems like the mall is a good example of what we want to try to, uh, work around because that has wide open parking fields that don't discourage people or maybe encourage people to cut diagonally across the lot. So I think that's one of the things you were alluding to.
Okay, um, I think if we do ever get to that part, you guys ever get to that parking lot phase of parking lot standards, I think that should count towards the tree because that's within the parcel. It's in the middle. It's wherever it is. It's not just all just a strip.
That makes good sense.
And then, I mean, if you look at the purpose and intent of it too, reading it that way, I think that makes sense to write it. You know, the purpose and intent, what does it say? Acting as a windbreaks, reducing noise and glare, accentuating views, improving overall health. The buffer is for something entirely different than that. This, this does, you know, this doesn't say anything about what we, you know, if you look at what the buffer is for. This is, it's a buffer, right? It's more of a visual, um, thing. So.
Okay.
That logic also applied to tree, for street trees.
The street trees are in the right of way, right? Are, are kind of not part, usually they're in the right of way. Yeah. Aren't they? They're sort of, that's sort of a different animal also. Yeah, good. No.
No, I would count street trees as something separate as well.
Yeah.
Okay. That's not part of the parcel because the, the village takes care of those trees, not the property owners.
Right.
So the, so the street trees aren't going to be on the parcel, but we're requiring street trees?
We're requiring street. If they're in the.
On the parcel?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so. I. That's how I read it. Yes.
That they're in the right of way.
Yeah. Well, street te, aren't street trees in the right of way?
Yes, planted in the right of way. But then you can, taking trees out of a right of way is an exception. Removal of trees from public right of ways is an exception to this law as well.
Because of, because they died or something else? Because of disease? I thought there were.
Um, okay. Any activity related to government.
I was gonna say, I thought, I think that was defined. That one didn't bother me. I was, I, I was, I was so bothered by the whole buffer and how that related to the rest.
At the end of the day, someone can come in and ask for an exception. Right? It's like, ask for everything. And then it, it doesn't seem reasonable at the time.
Yeah, maybe there's a case where, you know, they come in and say, well, look at all the stuff that we can do here in this buffer. Maybe it's a real wide buffer. We can do a lot of that. It'll be beautiful. We say.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I think the goal is always to try to make this as standardized as possible for everyone so that there aren't a lot of exceptions all the time, because then that gets to be a little subjective and people don't feel that, you know, it, it seems a little capricious on our part if we're, if it's too much. But I think true, the, the other thing that we have to remember is there is a bank. If they choose not to do certain things, they're going to have to pay into the bank. And, and the bank, or you know, there are other things. What did I just read? Something out in Arizona where they have a fake tree now that carbon collects. And so if they want to put one of those in, maybe we'd say, okay, I still would rather have trees. But you know, maybe there are these other mitigating technologies.
Station or something.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. They, I mean, C M A, I think is planning to do that. But other mitigating technologies might, that are also climate, you know.
And those are, that's that last, that's that last piece there, right? Is we don't necessarily have to use the money for trees, it's trees or other climate, you know.
But if they want to.
Actions, whatever. If they, if they want to pay into the bank.
Or if they want to say, gee, um, how about we put solar panels on instead or something? We might say, oh, all right, we might be able to negotiate frankly. I mean, I think one of the things that we haven't been, um, really using as well as I've said in the past is that our special permit process really does enable us to have give and take with people.
I don't know how I feel about the example of solar panels. They put solar panels up, they benefit from it. We still don't get trees. I mean, it's better for the environment, but why?
No, I know. Well, well then. We don't say yes. No, I, I, you know, um, I read a, a book recently where. She said if every person planted. Six trees over the next six years, we really wouldn't have an issue. I don't know if that's true or whether that was just a kind of, but I think it would help. I know it would. So at any rate, I think we just keep working. So what are some of the other things that you had redlined besides? I think we're gonna have to all.
Well, before we move on, so if, if we, if we all agree, no, we should keep the buffer out of the calculation, that's the way you read it.
And I was typing in and added, so there's no concern, trees added to meet the needs of the buffer strips shall not come.
Thing that is confusing, that we need to.
Yeah, just make it like very clear.
Yeah. I feel really badly because I don't have any comments other than this, because I have.
It's mostly moving it all around, but yeah.
Okay, so I, I think we should all take a look at that and see if we can deal with that next time so that we. All find it either less confusing or more confusing.
Yeah, maybe I can make it worse.
Sometimes. A matter of how you look at things, but. Okay. And. We also, so we can all put that on our agenda again for next time as well. And maybe, if, if everybody reads up on it and we're really organized, it won't take that long, I don't think. It looks like we're gonna have a full agenda.
What else you know is on the agenda for next time, Mike? I know we used to save that for the end.
They might come back.
The next one, you could have a, a pact.
Yeah.
Cause probably, maybe these two subdivisions.
See, I'm likely have these two, you may have the beers at that point and you will probably ask, uh, Kuga.
Medical.
As long as, the, the thing that was holding them up was getting the uh, uh, parking lot layout.
Because you know, as, as I had that commercial um, traffic. Guidelines, you know, they were very specific in there about parking lots. And that's the kind of thing I would like to kind of cycle back and get this, not as a guideline, but as a standard. That we just, it would take this whole thing. Right out, and people would know upfront what they had to deal with, especially as we work at the mall. One of the questions, um. In regard, well, I guess we deal with them is the whole ECCR. And I don't know where you're at with determining whether the parking lot is okay.
I think we just require that they get. PMI NewCo to, we need a written approval from PMI NewCo. That they've approved the design, because PMI NewCo does need to be looped in on the design.
That they don't, can they deny it?
I don't think the parking lot as it stands fits. I don't think the parcel that they gave to the Met is big enough in parking spaces for what that declaration covenant requires. So.
Oh, and I was gonna ask Mike, in terms of the parking. Our code is very specific about, you need four spots for each doctor and all that. Where did that come from? Is that kind of a stand, is that a New York state thing? Is that a emulating?
I, I honestly don't know where it came from. And Brad, do you happen to know where that come from? Is it a state?
I think it's a, might, it might come from the manual of uh. Traffic engine, uh, MTE, ma- manual traffic engineers, I think it's a guideline from that.
And you know, I, I've been thinking about that too, and I'm thinking, okay, when these were written. Did people go to the doctor and spend more time with the doctors? Now they come and go real quickly, so maybe they. Need so many parking spots. I mean, I just, I don't know, I was just pondering this, I thought. Faces for one doc seems a lot.
Well, I thought, is that designed for really things of this scale in this area, or is it really meant more to. Worry about like, you know, maybe a smaller doctor's office where you only have. Four or five practitioners, but then there, so maybe, maybe it makes more sense there versus something like this, I don't know.
Similar to like. About twelve to fourteen spots.
Right.
Where one spot might be critical.
Right.
Yeah.
Instead of. And that's what made me think of it is, I was comparing, literally comparing, I was like, we talked about this at the dentist's office.
Right.
That's a different scale than this.
Yes, it is.
Can you, I think people park, they bear, you know, you don't have to park.
Spread out differently, people are also much more likely to take public transportation there than they are here now, I realize. Close, but pick, you know, picture another parcel where the bus doesn't run right there.
No, I'm, I'm just wondering whether we need to take a look at that as well, for example. You know, uh, wha, how did we get to those numbers? Um, but, okay, so I guess we'll get more into that when they come back to us, we shouldn't get sidetracked.
This is going on and they may be called on to.
Oh, really? They do know? Oh, okay, good. Did you tell them that? Or, oh, thank you.
I talked to their council, because.
Mike Gavin?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Just, you're probably gonna get looped in.
We're laughing, exactly.
He thought he was done, no, 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 no.
The, the nice thing is they don't need to drive up here for twenty minutes from Pennsylvania, they can zoom in. Cause I always felt terrible, I always said, you know, I, I would worry in the winter, you think, geez, I hope nobody gets hurt driving. In the winter for a fifteen minute discussion, you know, it just.
I like the flexibility of that for, you know, people who want to join in, and, you know, potentially. You know, board members too, depending on how things work out. Yeah, no, I, I, I think that's correct.
Okay, so, did everybody do their homework? As to where we want, what things we'd like to work on next? Of course not.
Next, no, but I mean, like.
I have one big suggestion, as a lame duck now.
Go ahead.
So I think you guys should revisit zoning, like high density, medium, that's for what uses. And where they are, because I feel like we're piecemealing our zoning at the moment, like people are making requests and we're like thinking about it. I think we should look at it as a field and just see like where we can make improvements on those.
Well, I think even before we do that though, I would like to cycle back, I don't disagree at all. And it has to do with, you start with the charter uses if anything, and some of the definitions in our village that have been, you know. The, the council, when the council came, we had grappling with where does this fit? So all of those things really are, by looking at the zoning.
I, I, I looked back through, so I, I had that, and we had started to do that.
Yes.
And we kind of got caught up and went different directions and then, so that was one of the things. We talked about solar and then we had also talked about accessory structures.
Short term rental.
So don't worry about gardens in the front lawn anymore.
I do have a garden in the front.
Houses in your front lawn.
Greenhouse, the garden's there.
Um, those, those were the big things I had though.
Well, I went through, I had been. Stickying my codebook for some time for things, so I did try to get it down and um. Yeah, I have basically short, well, I'm considering the tree basically working on it, so I didn't put it down. But the short term rental, I think is really time for us to get something on the books. Um, I think it's just gonna rear its head again and we just need to have something.
I think we have better local information.
And the solar array code was practically done, um. And we were relying on Tony's expertise, but I think he had pretty much done lots of work with. With Carolyn, you know, we were working on that, and I think he pretty much gave his approval to that stuff. So as, as what we know now, I mean, the technology is kind of changing fast and. But I would start with short term rental before, because it's unlikely we're gonna have a solar, major solar array, although you never know.
Moving, so it's.
I know, you never know. Um, but yeah, the uses chart was top of the list for me because that sort of triggers. But before we do that, I really would like to go back to the preliminary plant for major subdivision that got us in trouble. Um, well, that's a big word, trouble, but.
There's confusion.
Created confusion um, with the Millcroft situation where conditional. Conditional approval of a preliminary plat. And I think conditional, you know, we didn't write conditions or be specific that there were no conditions. Looked okay, kind of, we need to really be sure, we, that is really clear to developers. And the same thing then with um. One forty-five fifty-nine, the whole special permit thing, where if someone, a developer does not meet the special permit. And we need to put a stop work order, that any other associated permits attached there too. Are also considered null and void, and I just really want that done like tomorrow. On those areas, because I don't know what's coming next. Oh, well, we may have something on Uptown, for example, I just want to be sure. Everybody's clear, and in fact, it was confusing somewhat to everyone, I think. Um. And then, yeah, I have things like some of the terms, like what is a building accessory, I think we need to add propane tanks, greenhouse. Trams, remember trams?
Oh, yeah.
And um, tourist home, there are a bunch of definitions that really need looking at, I think. And you had something you said that was constantly popping up as an, and I've already forgotten what you said at one of the other times. What, last, when developers come in, you have to let them know that there's.
Oh, uh, working hours.
Oh.
I was gonna say, it was related to like noise when we talked about.
Oh, working hours.
Like under performance standards, I mean, it goes out in every plan review, it's listed on there, the working hours. But when people don't, there's some jobs where I don't have to do a plan review, like it's not large enough. They still don't, they look in the book and they say, well, how, when can we work? And they don't, they're not told, so we want to be able to put it into performance standards.
Um, oh, there were, there were just some dumb things like mobile home shouldn't really be, it should be, we decided. And that, that's in the chart and then it trickles through the code and I've sort of know where some of the spots are, but who knows?
You have changing mobile homes and manufactured, I'll have to look at that, because I know New York State defines it too different.
To add manufactured or whatever.
It defines differently, it's categorized differently too, we look at it as far as code wise differently.
But in my copy of the code, and maybe it's been updated, but the additional conditions. Um, for building and land use permits on page one four five oh six seven, there's a chart and mine doesn't have CMT in it. District, it just never, you know, when CMT was approved, I'm not sure that it got in there. Uh, let's see, what was that? It was one forty-five dash fifty-eight. There's a chart.
What was it?
One forty-five fifty-eight, page one four five oh six seven is what my, I believe. Hope Pat come look it up. Thank you, Monica, for remembering to bring NAFS.
Put it next to my purse.
Would you like me to go through these, what you've suggested on here and?
Well, no, I think we just need to.
One forty-five oh six seven.
One forty-five fifty-eight. One forty-five dash fifty-eight.
You gotta remember that the book is.
There's the chart.
We had recent changes.
That has CMT in it? No, no, I don't see.
Is it online?
No, it doesn't, and it should.
And CLT, those are both in there, then CMT would be.
So for some reason that just didn't get.
So on, so. Online, it's, it's updated, CMT is there, right, it's in the, you know, it's in the.
No, it isn't.
I might be looking on a different page, you know, but I see it listed in many places online.
On, no, no, not on the chart.
Specifically talking about.
Yes, I'm specifically talking about, um. Those are just nips, I think the, the big thing is. Yeah. Those are just kind of the um. And there's a cou, there's a couple of places I wanted to ask Natalie about this, so in the appendix. Um, which is appendix A one, they talk about certain conditions meeting the general plan. Now, you don't have a general plan anymore, it's a comprehensive plan, but because, that way, does it have to stay general plan? Um, it's, um, you know what I'm saying?
Right on the first page, yeah, it's a long.
Three B and six A all refer to a general plan. When I first came. I thought, what the heck is that? But can we.
This could be amended.
Yeah, we can amend it, right? Yeah, okay. The real big thing is, is to, to look at our code and what we really want in each district, what do we think?
Yeah, and that's what we started to do and then.
And so I think maybe we just try to do two lines every meeting or something, what do you think?
I can start out by picking the first two and just making some suggestions.
Yeah, why don't we just.
And we just ask those out.
Yeah, and I mean, if, if you, if everybody just knows what we've got two to deal with this time, we just chip away at it.
To be honest, I'd like to send all of these at once.
I know that.
Yeah.
These change.
Yeah, and then we just.
But I'm wondering, before we do that, if we could address those two issues about. Your subdivision language and the um, one forty-five fifty-nine D, what do you think?
Do those first.
I really would like to get, get those done.
You want me to do one twenty-five seven and one forty-five fifty-nine?
I think it's important to do that.
Yeah.
And keep, just get that out of the way. I just think it's important to do those. Cause we just don't know, we might know, actually, I'm afraid we might. Happen, and I just think it would be really helpful to just have that, so that we don't have. Extra company visiting with these developers with their lawyers trailing behind, you know.
Get those changed over, try to get those.
And then we'd work on the other, get it all together.
To change that.
Those two first, because I think those really. Start working on the uses and some of the definitions, which. You know, times are changing. Oh, the other thing, one of the things is, is for, when we go through uses is. You know, we haven't allowed, as I mentioned, drive through in a lot of our things, and we need to rethink that in light of. People that are sick sometimes and need drive through. That we, we, and I think it's a traffic issue usually, right?
Yep.
But um, maybe we need to, additional special conditions or something, but think about that, I guess. And what about outdoor dining? We have a lot of restrictions on that too, don't we?
We don't have a lot of it, it's not one of those things that pops up a lot.
No.
There's not really much space for it.
There's not much space and of course the weather's never exactly.
Could be, I mean.
In the malls, like in the parking lots, right?
Yeah, the parking, they're gonna have trees.
Tables under the trees and.
But I'm just.
If there's a restaurant, you can.
Yeah.
There's parcels there that could be. Restaurants without door nine.
So in terms of the language change, you and Natalie worked together on that or what?
You want me to scratch up something?
Yeah. Yeah, cause those, those are the two that I really would like to, and then I think we need to just do as Monica said, start working on looking at our zoning.
Now, what is your concern with the conditional approval?
I think. When I, when we, when that came before us and there was, you know, pressured, pushback. That we hadn't given any conditions when we did condition, I think there's confusion with what the word conditional means. Or can mean, and because it can mean this. I want that eliminated in some way, that says, and, and even if it stipulates that the planning board will either say, we have no conditions at this time. But we reserve the right to. Whatever.
We stop using that word and.
Yes.
I mean, I'll call it preliminary, I mean, like, but not conditional, so yeah.
But Mike and I will look into it, how to.
But do you understand, that's where I think we got into trouble.
And that's the thing, so.
It's how you also use the conditions, like you have to enumerate them.
Yes.
Right, and so that's why I was, maybe, maybe before, and so maybe, maybe right, maybe it is state language, maybe there's not a lot about us being able to change that. But maybe we apply it differently.
Yeah, how you practically use it.
Maybe we don't call it that, that, or, right, because we're expecting people to come back, we know that there's this back and forth, you know, the fact that. We know that for, you know, small things, sure, people are gonna be here one time, we're gonna keep it open, the second time, we're gonna be done with these things. There's gonna be bigger things where I know that we've tried to say, get all as much as you can out of the way with Mike before he even show up, but realistically. Bigger things are gonna take two, more than two, and maybe we don't, you know, maybe there's something before conditional that we do, like just some sort of preliminary. It's not conditional, conditional means something very specific in our code and in the state. And preliminary is something different that we do here to give you ideas as you work towards that conditional approval.
Well, I think, and I believe that when we did go through that preliminary plat process, we just really said, yeah, this looks reasonable. We didn't put any conditions.
Absolutely, yes, right.
And so we need to somehow clarify that, but I want. All future members of the planning board know to do that. I guess that's my real goal, is that we now know that this is.
We have to go back on some of those. Well, I think some of those checklist things that you and I had started talking about, start doing them more.
Yep.
Cause I think that would help. Because I think that would help, like, you know, here is the checklist and the high level things to watch out for as you move through certain things.
Yes. Actually, there was one part two in here where, oh, I know what it was. It was a plat for the major subdivision. It said, the planning board shall within 62 days from the date of the public hearing.
Yes.
And we said, and I should add the close of the public hearing because we, and, and it is confusing.
Yeah, and that one is actually different than the state. The state statute just said the close of.
Oh, I had, I had highlighted that one, too. That's on my list.
That's an easy one for us. So I was gonna say, that's an easy one to approach.
And then Scott's also got another one in it that um I've been, that I've been pushing for, and that is start the escrow pad.
Oh, yeah, that was another one.
Yes, and that. Oh.
I've already got that. I don't circle them.
I mean, there's a lot of things we could do right now, quickly. And I know it seems like we're gonna be pecking the trustees to death with all these changes, but I really think some of these have got to get in.
Hey, once budget season's over, I mean.
That's why they get paid the big bucks, right?
That's right. And so I, but I think it would really help all of us if this was all clearer. Just avoid the confusion, save us a little time. Um, okay, what else do we have?
Just our trust, trustee.
Yeah, we should really send them these things because they didn't have a meeting because there was no coming. So maybe we should give them things for their agenda, too.
Budget season's over, which might be now.
So you didn't have to do your last meeting, you stinker.
I know.
Oh, boy.
Given them these changes to vote on.
That's right. Um, okay, so May the 9th is our next meeting. You're gonna help me to understand more about the open meeting law, so we, as we understand it. It'll be easier once we have a full board. But until then, Jim, I think the way it is is that as long as there's a live forum, people can attend remotely. But, you know, Natalie's gonna give us a reading.
Yes, I believe you can also vote remotely.
Right.
And vote remotely, which is the most probably important. The thing that confused me about it was is that, you know, you, if you were not attending, you had to be like on death's door or helping somebody on death's door. I got confused by that.
A few conditions about.
Yes.
Municipality in their authorizing law can.
Change that. I was hoping that was the case. Okay, good. So we'll wait for an update on that.
And then wasn't it extended and, wasn't?
For two years almost, somewhere.
It's always extended, so you don't, we don't need a local law until June.
June, that's what it was. Okay, that's what I thought it was, okay.
So I'll be working on that with the Board of Trustees.
Good. Great.
Oh, um, I have a question.
Yeah.
One of the things that I guess we're learning from this hybrid session is sometimes the remote participant hears most of what's being said, but not all of it.
Uh-oh.
So that's, is part of my question. So the summary that Jody sent out, and it sounds like Natalie, what you, what you're saying is that, you know, up until June 8th, we can do hybrid meetings. Like, that part I understand. But Natalie, are you saying that after June 8th, by local law, um, the ability to participate and vote remotely can be expanded from what was, from those extreme circumstances that would um allow remote participation? Is that, is that, I think that's what you said.
That's how I read it. In the local law, it said that you had, the village has to enact a local law that has like circumstances in which you can remote in, though.
Okay.
Who is going to be the gatekeeper of that, I think, is kind of a, a question. You know, am I, what sort of note do you need to be remoting in? I don't think one's required.
Okay.
Does it sounded, I mean, from the summary Jody said, it sounded like that after June 8th, it was only extreme circumstances, that you're very ill, or you're caring for a family member, or things of that nature, that only under those circumstances can you, can you fully participate?
Yeah, I don't think you should, um. Extraordinary circumstances as set forth in the body's adopted procedures.
I would say, I think it's.
So we have an opportunity to kind of regulate what that means.
So there's, but until then, with Monica's departure, you and I have to tag team if we're gonna be away, since we're the non-employee, well, we're retired. So we don't have a strict schedule, so that we're sure that we have a core alive. It's important.
I check my schedule. I'll be here for all.
Okay. And so once, you know, once we have a full board again, and we, we've recruited some people, um, I'm hoping that we can, you know, loosen up on that. But until then, you and I have to keep in close contact as who's where and when.
Actually, until June.
Yeah, until June.
We don't have to be here at all.
Right, right.
Once June starts, that's when we need to make sure we have.
Right. After June. So did I, did I understand that, that at the next meeting Natalie's gonna give us a more comprehensive summary of what's needed on this law? Okay.
Yes.
Like, I hear most of what's going on, but not all of it.
Yes, I will, I'm gonna hope to have even the local law drafted by that point. Um, I just haven't had a chance to dig into the budget because that's actually where this law is. So.
So um regarding May 9th, Jim, will you be here in person?
Um, I could be. I mean, I will be on ethic on May 9th, so I could be there in person.
Okay, yeah. Oh, okay. I see what you're saying. Yeah, it doesn't matter, really.
Doesn't matter.
Okay. Um.
Mike and Alan, hang on here.
Board of trustee meeting coverage. Yeah, okay, so. I have, so Monica took April instead of doing May because she's not gonna be here. So I was gonna put Patrick in the mix. So he was gonna do May. And then I have Jim, you've been, do June or do you want July instead? I don't know why I, I thought for some reason.
I think I did July last year, so I'll take that one.
Yeah, because you get the fourth off. I was gonna ask.
I, I didn't know that, honestly.
July. I know that I'm going to be. And I might have, actually, we might cancel July 4th, as it actually is. A holiday for once for the planning board.
We're actually supposed to.
A real holiday.
Yeah, no, we should cancel that.
July 4th is a Monday.
Oh.
Oh, damn.
Oh, it is, yeah.
Yeah.
Why do I, oh, that's the trustee meeting we're talking about. Of course it is.
He really organized himself well, didn't he?
Yes, I.
Yeah.
The founding fathers knew what. Um, okay, so at any rate, you're gonna take, I had you down for June originally.
Wait.
Do you, do you, do you care?
Wait.
Do you want me to take, you want me to take June?
I, I don't care either.
I don't care either.
You're the chair. You make the assignments, so whatever you say.
Okay, you're on for June. Okay, and then I will take uh July, and then we start over with Mike, Patrick, Jim, Lisa. I was going to suggest at some point when we have a full board that maybe the chair doesn't need to be involved, just like the mayor is not Aliyah A. Zone always, unless you want to be or there's an issue. But we'll deal with that. Right now, we have to have everybody on board, I think. But we do not need to attend those meetings, obviously.
Yeah, those ones you can do virtually.
We can just virtually zoom in, so it's not as a big deal.
Are there any contenders for the, see, are we alternates? No contenders?
No. I know. Good. Um, one of the things that Mike asked about was about packets. I would love to get a packet again. But. Mike, do you don't care?
Ah, please. Well, so here's the thing. Like, for these, like, the, yeah, some, some, if it's like normal documents, like minutes in the agenda, I won't need them. I mean, honestly, I don't even need, it's really the oversized things where it's nicer to get a better level of detail, but. Well, but no, but you, I mean, you send these electronically, too, the bigger, as long as, as long as I have a digital copy of everything that would be printed out, I'm fine with not having paper.
Go by each one. You tell me how you want this. Natalie, how do you, do you want a packet or do you?
Yes, I want a packet.
You can pick up.
Yes.
Or, okay, so if you want to pack it, you can pick up. I'm not gonna have one here for you when you get here, right?
Right.
But you can have one for me.
Packet. Lisa wants a packet. Pat?
Mike, yeah, packet.
I don't want a packet.
Monica doesn't want.
I don't, I will say. He offered me.
The huge things.
Yeah, that's.
For the CMA. And I really, only part that I want are the things that we have control over. Because it went, or we have control over all of it theoretically, but I'm not gonna sit and worry about all the little offices and electrical stuff and the grade, you know, all of that.
I could spend days.
Really am glad to have some of the other outside stuff that we will be making decisions on. And I think it really is helpful to have that. It takes up an awful lot of space in your house, but, you know, it's, it's worth it when it comes time. I suppose we could each have a cubby like in kindergarten. Could we have a locker where we can keep?
Can we have little cubbies in there?
We actually have um file cabinet and drawer.
Place where you can put your boots and everything.
Yes.
Jim, do you want a packet?
Oh, um, yes, I'd like a packet, please.
Lawyers and their papers.
My bookshelf hasn't, my, my planning board bookshelf hasn't had paper on it in a couple years. It's got all kinds of open spaces.
I have.
Many years now.
I'm glad you can say that. I have drawers full of past records that I'm afraid to get rid of that I'm gonna have to give to him because you just need to keep some of this.
Are gonna have to give to him.
Because, no, I'm talking about um all of the plans for the PDAs and things.
Yes.
Because you just never know who's gonna need some of this stuff. And I don't know who's got what. But, okay, you're gonna do the open meeting law, and we know that this is Monica's last meeting. Monica, Monica. And I said.
Whoops, I'm not gonna lick this quote.
Oh, thank you.
I know. Off the board, I'm gonna start designing cards for people who are on municipal boards so when they leave, we can have a decent.
Should I open it?
Sure.
It's not. I did such a great job.
It won't be the same.
I'm gonna miss you guys, honestly. I'll come in on Zoom once.
Zoom in, right?
Time sake. I know, it's gonna be weird. So I gotta say, okay, I'm gonna, this is my, I'm gonna say my going away speech. So I do that for the record. You're gonna have to transcribe it.
Yes, she does.
Well, I was just, these five years with you people have been amazing, and I thank you for all of your hard work and dedication. And I love how everybody on this board, we may differ in terms of our opinions, but we all have one goal in mind is to make this village better. And I love that. I love that. There's no hidden agendas. There's nothing but the, you know, altruistic vision of making this village the best place to be. And so I'm very proud to be part of this board and with everyone involved, BCA, with the trustees. It's been a fabulous place to live for 15 years, and I'm gonna miss it. I am gonna miss everybody. Thank you.
Well, we'll miss you, too. And no, it is. I would echo that. It, we're really lucky to, that.
I think it's healthy we disagree on things, so.
Pardon me?
I think it's healthy we disagree on.
Oh, no, if somebody said.
Think across the board, I'm like, well, you know.
No, people definitely said to me, gee, that you, so and so didn't. I said, I know, isn't it great? And they look at me like I'm crazy. I said, this, I said, it's a sign of a healthy board. Just fall in. And I said, we listen, and it's, it is good. But I also said to somebody, like, you know, it's, it's a team sport. This is a team sport. That's what it is. And we've had a really, we're really fortunate to have a good team. And you're right, we do have a similar goal ultimately. And just everybody sitting here, it's just been great. It is, we will miss you.
And the board has had the luxury of having, like John Courtney and Brett Cross. I mean.
Oh, we can, everybody. And that has, and you've brought that piece to us in a different way, too, than previously. And so we're really.
Somebody doesn't understand what's going on, there's somebody. Well, I appreciate it. We've leaked on you a lot on things, so.
Well, no, we've all been very fortunate, I think, you know, as we go forward. So um next meeting, Patrick, um, I did speak to Ronnie. So you will be replacing Monica as a full board member. And I, as far as I know, they will be.
I thought he replaced.
Ronnie replaced Tony.
But Tony only wasn't filling out a full term. He was filling out Carolyn's term. So how does that work?
Because when did the new term start?
I don't know, but hers just ended. I don't know when Carolyn expired because I'm not sure I still have.
I'll check with Joey. She's got.
We're just an alternate short, right, with me going? No.
No, 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 we're two, I don't know, we're, no.
They don't have an alternate.
Oh.
We're at NLS, we need two.
Yeah, he was the alternate.
Yeah, okay.
That's what I was gonna say, you're about two weeks.
Excuse me, I'm really not sure that you, he replaced Tony per se, did he?
Yes.
Oh, he got voted in at like a noon meeting or something? Oh, he did.
Yeah, he replaced Tony.
So my slot's open, and we need an alternate.
Okay, so then his term ends like in a year. That doesn't make sense to me.
No, that does.
Yeah. I'm filling in for somebody whose terms expire.
I would have thought we would just lock you in for five years.
Okay, I mean, he's gotta replace somebody, right? And it was either keep an alternate and be short a full board member.
Okay, so I think I wrote Ronnie something, but I'm, I'm wrong then about that. So straighten him out, would you? I, I don't have that correct then. I was thinking he was replacing you because he's still our alternate.
No.
That was a plan.
Yeah, that was the plan.
It was the original.
That was the original plan. I didn't adapt very well to a change.
When you sell your house, I'm just assuming you're selling your house.
Being on condition that they become a.
Yes, thank you. That's exactly what I was gonna say, is put it in.
No, I've, I've thought about.
There's a condition that you sell the house to somebody. Approve of.
I'll give them the discount if they join the planning board.
Actually, I think what it is, is none, nobody can skip, quit the board until they found a replacement.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, we're just fooling around here. I think, is there anything else that anybody has? Okay, so we have the two subdivisions. We have probably CMA. We have maybe the beers.
Maybe. I mean, you're gonna have, you'll have the two subdivisions as long as the variances are granted.
Right.
We'll have the tree conservation.
And the tree ordinance, and then we'll start.
Two items on the chart?
Working on the chart.
Yeah, besides me.
Yeah. That's okay. Look at, it's only 8:30 and we're done.
CMA, if everything works out right, you'll have some resolutions.
What are the two resolutions?
Seeker and then.
Oh, right.
Okay.
Because I have.
Yeah, we already did.
If I hear from the county.
Oh, you still haven't heard from the county? Wow. Isn't that long? Is it?
I wonder if they're actually looking.
But the last one, I mean, as opposed to being like, no, it's one. I tell them when the public hearing is, and the last one I received, I received the day of, oh, the public hearing, so.
That would seem.
Just in time delivery.
I don't poke the bear. I do.
Yeah. Okay. Um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will move to adjourn.[1776.96]